To their perspective.
Yes.
Next is Tony Bone with McKinnon Creek. They are the engineers of record for both the water and sewer plant. Tony's worked with us for years. I worked with Tony before I came here, so it's a continued relationship. Thank you.
Oh, good afternoon. First, let me apologize if you have to listen to two engineers everywhere. I'll probably make this brief. If you have any questions as I go through this, certainly ask me. Talking about wastewater treatment plant that we've talked about multiple times there over the past few years. So today, discussion topics. First thing is a basis of design, which we completed. We typically refer to that as a roadmap, if you will. And we dig into equipment sizes of structures, all the assets required to build the facility. That helps us be able to generate exactly what needs to be done and costs associated with that. And following that, we've also done some preliminary design, footprinting the site, looking at what it's going to take to build the system, not only working with the existing plant, but also what it takes to expand on this side of the well. So I'll talk a little bit about both those today, as well as cost estimates. Everybody knows things that cost just simply went through your roof on everything. And we've got some fairly significant cost increases since probably our last discussion, so I'm going to talk about that a bit. And also just some discussion about our anticipated schedule, design permitting, construction moving forward. Again, any questions, just to stop me. Your wastewater plant and any water plant are both located on the same site, so it's a tight site, but it's very efficient. It's just there all at once. And of course, wastewater plants are in the blue square. As you can see, it's basically just a big concrete structure, a lot of common walk construction. It's a very efficient design. Fortunately, based on our preliminary design looks, we were able to expand the facility on that site without having to acquire additional property, although it was tight. We could make it work on the site there, so that's very much positive across those. Some specifics on the plant itself. Currently, the plant is rated at 300,000 gallons per day. Your build out on the island is 650,000 gallons per day. So for this discussion, we're looking at expanding that plant from 300 up to 450, need the islands built out. Now, to go along with that, sort of two components. You know, we can treat the wastewater, but another challenge is where do we dispose of that treated output? Fortunately, the village already has a permit with the 650. So while we don't have the treatment capacity, we do have disposal capacity, which is a huge, huge part of this. So that's very much a positive and a negative. That's a combination of infiltration basins that are located on course and also golf course reuse as well. Some of you may remember a few years ago, we worked with the club to develop a plan to not only improve those basins, but also do reuse on golf course. And that allowed us to get to that 650,000 gallons per day. So today, the discussion is on the plant, but just as a very positive note, we have disposal already in. Back in 2019, we took a cursory look. When I say cursory, I mean 10,000 square, 2,000 feet altitude of different processes. Instead of the typical process you have, there's some alternate processes we can look at. You have what's known as a sequential batch reactor, an SVR, and it's a biological process. There's other processes we look at, MBRs, fixed film, bio reactors. By and large, what we found is those were either too practical and/or too expensive. And most of them are probably 25 to 50% more from an upgrade standpoint, just using the SVR process. So back then, we decided, based on the plant configuration, site configuration, that the SVR was indeed the most cost-effective means to move forward with the plant. So as fast forward to today, again, we dealt into that with quite a bit of details, and I call this alternative too. Certainly looked at your SVR process. We looked at what it's really like, kind of alternative 1A, you know, a tweak to that process. And the process we looked at is sort of a proprietary name, but it's AquaMarina. It's the same process. It's a batch process. It's a biological process. It really does the same thing. It just allows you to do more treatment in a smaller footprint. And that translates to lower costs, not only capital costs, but also operation costs overall. So I don't want to get too far down in the details of that unless you have questions, but essentially, it is the same process, but it's just a refinement of what you're doing now. And as far as AquaMarina, you know, we don't want to be flouting, we don't want to play on their ground. We don't want you to play on their ground. We want to make sure everybody understands that it is a tried and true process. It was actually developed in the Netherlands. There's probably 100-plus plants around the world that operate, and now there's an additional 40-plus in the U.S. that are either in design, under construction, or operational. So it's a tried and true process, and we're not going to be out on the leading bleeding edge of anything with respect to this. So very, very, very solid process all we're in.
Well, just a question on that. Not a student, I mean, obviously, you know, but that's a very small number of water treatment plants, certainly in the United States, so.
Comparatively, yes.
Yeah. So is it bleeding edge technology? Or like, I mean, I get what you're saying. It's tried and true. Why so few places have adopted it?
It is. It is a, in the world of process, people do slowly as far as adoption. In Europe, it gets adopted a lot quicker. The Europeans are a lot more apt to adopt new technologies. The U.S. is really, really, really slow. North Carolina is extremely slow to adopt new technology, so there's a lot of piloting that goes on. There's a lot of prove it, prove it, prove it, get there. So for the past 20 years, we've seen this really develop, and people understand that it's purely, you know, a viable process. Yeah, but you're right. Comparatively speaking, it's a.
I guess what's the more mainstream, like, facility? I mean, obviously, we planted thousands of water treatment plants on there. There would be something that's more prevalent in the U.S.
SBRs are very prevalent for smaller plants, and what we would refer to as activated sludge aeration, which is all a biological process. At the end of the day, it's all biological. It's just a matter of how you handle it.
Okay.
And this is simply a biological process. It just does a little different tweaking on how they handle the biomass that completes that biological process.
Fair enough. I didn't want to say that.
Yeah. So would it be fair to say, though, that most people don't change their systems until they have to?
They don't. And one thing is, if you invest in a plant, it's really, it's really difficult and costly to go from one process to another.
Okay.
You start working down that path. Eventually, I've seen some plants there from one major process to another, but typically, you're expanding and improving upon what you have.
Let me ask a question this way. We had space here. If space were not a constraint, would you still be recommending this, or would you be sticking with the significant?
I would still be, I would still be recommending the batch process. And the reason being is, is there's sort of two different types of plants. There's what they refer to as a continuous flow, plug, flow plant, where the water moves continuously through the plant. And I always describe that as thinking like a house with rooms. So there's multiple rooms in a house, and wastewater flows through each room. We change the conditions in the room, change the water as it goes through. In a batch process, we have one room, put water in, and we change the conditions for that. And now, the advantage, though, for you is a batch process is very flexible when it comes to a lot of varying flows. So in the wintertime, your flows are really small. Summertime, it peaks really hard in July and August. So a flood flow plant is a little bit more difficult to operate in those conditions, but a batch plant is really set up very well for that. Quite frankly, when the SVR was picked, you know, 20 years ago, that was part of the reason. And I think that justification still holds today.
Thank you.
And again, I need to get a lot of detail here, but typically, in the SVR, you have a fill and a draw, a react, which is a biological process, and a settling process. And in a standard SVR, which you have now, it typically goes through five phases. The AquaMarina process allows us to go through three phases, shortens the phase, improves the treatment, improves the settling. Kind of goes back to that first checkbox there, that we're able to treat more in the same body. So we can do more treatment in the same footprint, which is less structure, less infrastructure, very, very efficient. Also, most treatment plants are doing nutrient removal now, removing nitrogen, phosphorus, and there's typically a chemical addition that's associated with that. With the AquaMarina process, it does create a different biomass of nutrients or some bacteria that's involved in that process to help reduce nutrient loading, which effectively reduces our need for chemicals. We still have some, but it does reduce the need for that. Less equipment. As an example, I mentioned mixers here. If you go out to the plant, you walk on top of one of the reactors, you'll see a large floating mixer. And that mixer is running constantly. It's a big electrical load. It's an equipment load that we're out every time, sort of things such. With this process, because it's so efficient, the mixers go away, and that's a fairly significant save. So there's other equipment too. That was just one that I thought, if you ever walk up to the plant, that's an easy one to see, that these things are operating. And then, you know, when you go to this route, they're going to eventually be removed.
To have to improve on odor control by chance?
Fingers crossed, Chris.
I mean, not to say that it's a problem. It just sometimes depends on which way the wind's rolling. And obviously, you know, if we, if we go back 30 years and put it in the middle of the maritime force, that would have been ideal, but.
So my standard statement is, there's no such thing as a treatment plant without odor. Because you do things to combat it, but eventually, I think you're, you may see less odor in the winter because you have, you know, the cycles are a little bit more spread out. And once you get to summertime and it's operating, I think odors would be similar. Simplified controls, you know, we like to be on the edge, cutting edge. This one, as far as scated telemetry, a lot of abilities out there, control things from a computer standpoint, telemetry standpoint. This process is a little bit simpler, which is a good thing. And I always say, if you're dealing with wastewater, you want to get them A to B as quick as you can, as simple as you can. Don't complicate it. You know, let's meet our permit limits and get out. So that is very much an advantage here, to just simplify the process and build your operators. And I mentioned, as far as, you know, being able to do it on a smaller footprint, typically about 50% smaller than the standard SVR. So if we were to build your plant right now, we could build it about half the size of where it is. And it's still me with the same treatment, treatment, but it's, and to go along with that, although I have many real calculations on this, but typically, you will see about 30% reduction in your actual operational expenses, electricity, chemicals, et cetera. And it's probably more so in the summer because that's your peak load, but you'd certainly see some more in the winter time as well. But generally, you see about a 30% reduction in your actual operational costs using this process. Any questions on that? Trying not to geek out too bad. So this is an overview of your current facility. And generally, just concentrating on these three basins here, these are your SVR. This is actually the three reactors, sort of the heart of the biological process. So treatment occurs there. There's a couple of equalization basins. Because it is a batch process, we have to be able to equalize flow during the field. All the biological components that were moved from the wastewater are treated in digesters, there's three digesters located here. Ultimately, before it's discharged to the infiltration basins or the golf course, it goes through ultraviolet disinfection. That's kind of a quick overview. The thing is, as I go to the next slide, is concentrated on these three basins right here. So this is doing 300,000 gallons a day right now. And again, these three basins are now shown in the green. So these three basins, under proposed plan, will be converted to AquaMarina, which is actually called an activated granular sludge process. And so we would take those same three basins and be able to go from 300,000 to 650,000 gallons of treatment in the same basin. So that kind of gives you an idea of the efficiency of the process, how much it's improved from the old standard SVRs that we've always designed. Everything else you see, what's the first, things are in red, are actually new structures, but everything else is working within the existing facility. And I'm always a big fan of, let's use the asset we have. If we have a really good asset here, it's been in good shape. No issues with the structure itself. So beyond the SVR conversions, there's a blower, electrical room here. We're going to convert this all to just simply a chemical room. One of these, these digesters are going to be converted to equalization basins. This is the existing digester, which will upgrade. These two in red are two new digesters. No matter what process you choose, we're going to still have to build additional digestion. It's just simply a volume issue at that point. So those two red boxes with the brown shading would be new digesters. Up here in blue would be a new mechanical room and blowers. One of the vital components of a wastewater treatment process, especially a biological process, is air. We have to impart air into that waste stream. So just don't have enough room in the plant we have now. We have to add additional blowers. And so that's really what this building is intended to include, additional blowers, to be able to improve the process.
Will be additional blowers to what we have today?
No, well, it'll be an addition in number, but we're going to move, blowers are currently in this room.
Right.
Those will go away, and they'll all be centrally located here. But they will be more and larger, and we're going to really concentrate on soundproofing.
Thank you.
Little difference in soundproofing, more than exists. And one thing to mention is UV, UV system. While the UV system is actually sized for the future, it has reached its sort of point of useful life. JP, I don't want to speak for it. I think we've kind of understood it. Even though we'd like to use it again, it really needs to be replaced. So that will be part of the upgrade, make sure you have a good robust system from flow in and flow out all the way through. Any questions on that?
Well, just one. How do you get from what we have to that? As far as terms of processing waste?
What do you?
You don't get to take a few days off.
Yeah. Leave the island prepared a month or something.
We would phase it. The beauty of the SVR is that each one is reactive, operable, etc. Okay. So you could do work on one reactor while you're using the reactor. And also, I guess, the beauty of the island is that it is a low flow during winter months, so you'd have some, you know, some time to be able to work on the off-season. As well as utilize, all this tankage in here is actually storage. There's some additional storage in here as well. So there's a lot of flexibility, actually more flexibility here than if we were to have a different type of process. So it's a good question. I do, I do definitely do be thinking about sequencing, but the nature of the SVR allows us to do that.
Hey, quick question. And I might be misremembering it. One time, we were talking about sludge, drying sludge.
Yes, we're going to actually have a centrifuge guns.
Okay.
We're going to use a gravity technique to reduce, to increase the sludge percentage.
And will that be incorporated into this new?
We're actually hoping to have it in place before the expansion.
So solids, you know, we always talk about wastewater treatment through the plant, but the solid, the residual treatment is also extremely important. I think we've got a fairly high water content right now, so it's using a centrifuge or some other mechanism to lower that moisture content. Allows you to take less off the island, re-circulate the water, and ultimately ends up in a cost savings story. So that's a really good step that JP's taking forward.
We're at 3% or 4%, and our target is 25%.
Yeah. Cost, the total. So the cost of the AquaMarina, and this is as of May 2023, that's when we completed our basis of design, was about $33.5 million. The current estimate, again, in that May 2023 timeframe, comparing it to your standard SVR, just upgraded by half, it's 38.5. So it's about a $5 million difference. And that gets right back to the, you know, doing it in a small footprint, et cetera, et cetera. So sort of stand before you and bear it all. In 2019, we came to you and said that, well, if you upgraded SVR, it'd be about $11 million. So tell you where that comes from. A huge part of it's really been the inflation, COVID supply shortages. And, you know, honestly, we all know what inflation is, and supply shortages have been a really huge issue in our industry. A lot of the equipment we order comes from overseas. You know, beyond, you know, raw material is manufacturing, getting shipped here, that is the driver of pricing. COVID, not in and of itself, but a lot of people, as you know, took off of COVID, never came back. A lot of specialty skill sets we see in major heavy construction, like electrical, at one, the price of labor has just went through the roof. So based on the numbers we're seeing, and we're looking at a lot of different data, it's about a 275% increase. So just labor and inflation alone would put you about 30 million, based on where you're at 2019, basically today. As we dug into that basis of design, there's some other things that we added. The scope changed a little bit, recognizing, as we talked about, the UV really needs to be replaced. We didn't, we didn't plan on replacing that because it was properly sized. SVR equipment, we're going to reuse the SVR equipment, so obviously, we'd have to be replacing that. There was a number of other equipment costs in there. We've also looked at the on-site Timber Creek pump station, which is the primary main pump station that brings flow to the plant, as well as the on-site backwash pump station, backwash pump station. So there are some things in there that are scope-driven, and just generally about 126% there. So, you know, 11 million to 30 million is primarily inflation and supply shortages, and then there's some other items that would have gotten to 38.5. So just kind of give you an idea of what is driving the cost of these things. And I believe the proof is in the real numbers, and so I will give you a few examples to show you where this is coming from. And I'm not going to mention climate, I don't think that's appropriate, but in 2018, we designed a big plant, wastewater treatment plant, and it was $43 million. Client came to us and asked us just to, just recently, to duplicate that plant. Same plant, carbon copy, pick it up, put it right beside, $116 million four years. True, absolutely true. There is a 750,000 gallon per day plant that had to be bid twice because the prices just blew everybody out of the water. It was in the upper 40s. This is a 650, that's a 750. So that kind of gave you a scale that these are real numbers. We recently did a, not a really big project, a pump station. We bid it last year. It was about four and a half million. Project got pulled into play. We just rebid it again. It came in 70. Four years, no changes. Everything's the same. So while, I can, I can tell you all this, but there is a lot of data that shows those numbers are absolutely real. Unfortunately, that's where we stand. Now, we'll say, we do have about 30% contingency in these numbers, and given where we're at, even though we've done some preliminary design, I would recommend we keep those numbers in there from a budget standpoint. Yeah, nobody can predict if things are going to come down, if they're going to level off or if they won't, but prudence would say, let's keep a decent contingency in there for life. Any questions on that, other than the shock that goes along with it? Have another one. This is a huge plant. It's $250 million about four years ago, and it's approaching 480 right now. Same plant. It's absolutely incredible. So timeline, as I mentioned, we'd already, we've already done a preliminary design and a basis of design, so that's complete. And we would estimate about another 10 months to finish design, and maybe 15 months total to go through designing it, permanent in hand. And should you choose to move forward with bidding construction, I've showed these highlighted several, because you may or may not need to be at that point. So the total timeline, we'll be looking at about three years. If you started right now, it'd take you about three years to build that plant. We estimated 38 months. And the reason I'm kind of broken down like this, and JP, I think you're going to talk about, maybe tomorrow, about growth of the island and when that may need to occur. But my takeaway here is, is I would recommend to Alan, consider going ahead and doing the design, getting your permit in hand. And that's kind of small money compared to the construction cost. That's really where your money is at. But I guess, given, given where we're at, the regulatory environment is really, really challenging right now. Permits are not getting less stringent. The EPA continues to drop things on us. We're dealing with some other issues now with metals, zinc, copper, nickel, arsenic. We've had a challenge in arsenic, which I think worked out on your water treatment plant discharge. So, you know, the EPA and the state are going to continue to promulgate rules that are even more stringent. Treat it, they're going to make you treat it. So kind of look at it from a burden-hand standpoint. Let's get a permit in hand, have that on the shelf, then ready to go to construction. You can essentially adjust it as often as go ahead and go to construction at that time. So that's my number one recommendation. Obviously, we want to monitor market conditions. Hopefully, we'll see something improved here shortly, or the next year or two. And as an option, if we get to that point, it may be good for us to consider a big purchase of materials or equipment. We've done this with a number of clients, not only from a lead time standpoint, some of these things are coming from, this equipment comes from overseas, it takes forever to get here. It could shorten your timeframe. It'd also help you save some money on the equipment. As contractors, generally, just take that equipment, mark it up. So it could kind of, kind of help you in both, both aspects as well. Some of the things we're seeing, a generator, standard typical generator today is running about a year to 14 months to get, how do you ship it? Get a generator. Some we used to be able to get in, they get some, they're not big generators, these are standard generators. So that's sort of just a microcosm of everything we're seeing in the industry. So repurchase could save you money, it could also save you time, you know, if you get to that point. I think I want to, and the reason I made that comment is because I know everybody wants to not spend that big money on the construction, and you know, think about, you know, when's the right time to do that. But it's recognized, you know, it's a battleship, right? We can't turn it on and down. So you can't come to us and say, hey, we need a plant in six months. It would happen anyway. It's certainly not going to happen in this environment. So I just want to make sure we're, you know, thinking about that from the schedule standpoint.
And just a comment, that is, that is our plan, is to be shovel-ready, with permit in hand. And as we know, we got the funding from the state to help complete the design process that they've been working on. So, yeah, that's.
Yeah, we've already budgeted for permitting and all that, right? Didn't we?
We budgeted for the initial task that got them through the preliminary design.
Okay.
Which was about 360.
Yeah.
Which we got, we got the state fund budget grant for 965, which will reimburse us for all that, but the second part is about 650.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I have a question. And not so much for you, Tony. Imaginary asset, how does that dovetail with your actual assessment of? So we have an asset that we're bringing on board. How does that fit into your analysis, if it does at all?
So the asset management or the AI, sorry, the AI projects, we are only covering the collection system. Part of your infrastructure disappears to people that you can't, which is not under the focus of the project. So the precedent is, is a subject, what we're doing is just the collection system, pump station, distribution system. So just the partisan assets.
Everything to get it to the plant, right?
Exactly. Chris, I would like to say one thing. But staff is well aware of that, and we're looking to dovetail any of the recommendations that come in from the AIA to what our improvement speed to be to match up to where we're going in the expansion.
Well, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, okay.
One exception, that is a great study piece of it. We have information like this to know it does get incorporated into the science, which is not necessarily part of this project. And I can add, so we, yeah, they'll be taking that, but not to actually the asset management.
Thanks.
I bet it's somewhere between the two of y'all answering this question. Like, you're doing the work on, like, the lift stations, though, right? We've talked about that, right? That work's going to be ongoing. How does that feather in when you're trying to do, right? You're doing, you're making plant improvements at the same time that you're trying to assess the overall value of the plant, or, you know, the condition of the plant?
I could, I could give you an example. Right now, we have our separation stream going into our headneural system. So we purchased a new stream. We did that with coordination between Tom and also gave that information to, for the AIA brand. So we've brought that equipment, it's being installed, it's going to be installed this spring.
Right.
So that's going to fit into the overall plan. And that's what's happening, try us to remain aware of and cognitive of, and try to incorporate as we can. Another example is the central main at Timber Creek. We know we have issues there, and we're making those improvements to complement the, with the expansion, and also what we expect to come up as issues in the AIA.
Yeah, I guess, maybe let me ask it different. Are you giving, are you forenaming that when the improvement? Because like on the lift stations in particular, we're a couple of years delayed on that, right? From when we originally thought it was going to happen. So if you reported it to them that, hey, these are going to be installed or fixed, they're not done yet, right? Right? So you do, so it's, it's more real time, not necessarily what we budget. Okay.
We're going to, when we can, we're having improvement, planning meeting, we're going to be incorporating all any projects that are in the pipeline, some actively or ongoing projects. We're going to take all that and do anything from the leadership standpoint, if there's any projects that you'd like to include, implement, unless we can say, do that. The, yeah, so that's.
Okay.
So I expect we'll be seeing footnotes in the report that talk about this particular station was just completed, or this particular station is planned to be done in fiscal year 25 or something like that.
About, I don't know, maybe six, eight months ago, I had to give them a draft CIP. And that draft CIP had what council member just pointed out, is that, you know, we had different completion dates on there, but I have updated those with them along the way with the delays we got.
Got it.
So that's all on paper, and they have it also. We're looking at it here. So it is something that's being tracked.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
And also, as part of the life cycle model, there is a one-year advantage service that is included in the contract. So even if you want to see, if projects are all built in, and some of these projects can get more like, you know, an updated dates or completed completion dates. All that is going to get you, like, you know, one year after the project completion. So we can, we can update that up to like 12 months.
Now, here's the question nobody wants to hear asked, or probably wants the answer to. But we were expecting an $11 million plant expansion that was going to result in water and sewer rate increases of about what? And now that that number's gone into the $30 million range, what kind of water and sewer rate increases?
40. Call it 40, if you're around it.
What kind of rate increases are we talking about?
I hope you didn't want to hear that.
I was like digging my hole. So without the data in hand, I would wait until the rate studies completed to get that firm number before that's even put out. Famous process, look.
One last second. Do you have recommendations for about that? David Sawyer come up, and do we need larger water hazards on the office? And do we need larger water hazards on the office?
I think those are good.
David Sawyer, he's, he's a Robert Norton. He came in after Robert. I don't know if you two have ever.
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it.